I put that.
Alright, so we're gonna open the public hearing case two thousand and twenty-three D Highland Circle. And just let everybody know that this hearing is being recorded. Our introduction of the planning board members Madison Pixley Chair Christine Christina Brodeur, Pat Wayne, David Demers, and John Matthews. Our statement of authority, the planning board is established under chapter forty-eight of the general laws of Massachusetts and acting compliance with. Chapter forty-eight under the zoning bylaws of the town Camden, chapter forty-one governing the submission and approval of plots and proposed subdivisions. And the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and hand to master since our legal notice. The Hammond Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Mondays, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five P M. And the hand in play in the townhouse. Six twenty-five Main Street Hand and Mass on the application of Austin Graham of Graham Construction for a special permit under section. Seven point five four-two of the Hand and Zoning Bylaw for a common driveway to provide. Access to three adjoining lots owned by the applicant located on Highland Circle and South Munson Road. Lots forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during. Normal business hours for the board mass fix the chair of the Hand and Planning Board published in the Wilbur Ham Hamden Times July sixth and July thirteen. Twenty twenty-three. So this is the continuance from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. We started this a while ago. Just realized what yours is. How's it going?
Ready?
Yeah, go for it.
Um, just so you know, I think that's Chris Rook, my son, playing bond is on here. They can.
You guys want to see this?
Now he's on his. Can they hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm here. Yeah, yep. Messrs, can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. For the record, Will Walter, professional engineer in Massachusetts with Alfred Benish and Company. Here with the owner of the property, Austin Grant, Mr. Graham. Visit town. I'm sure you guys all know him. I'm assuming you all know him. He built subdivisions and houses. So this property is off of Highland Circle. Uh, get you oriented north is to the right. And South Munson Road is down here on the on the left-hand side. Highland Circle comes off South Munson Road and kind of curls around. Ends the cul-de-sac and there's a long driveway that goes to a house back there. And then. There's a number of houses up here up behind the circle. There's another little cul-de-sac right there. Um, site is that he owns his three properties totaling about forty acres. The topography is such that the slopes high on the west. Low down on the east, there's a large wetland system down here. Uh, the area that is tributary to this wetland system, which I. I did my best to get off of G I S. I think it's about four hundred acres, give or take. I mean, I could be off a little bit, but. It all ends up coming down to Temple Brook. It's fallen underneath South Munson Road over here. So essentially, um, we're not here for to get a subdivision approved. There's already three legal lots. Uh, we're here basically for a common driveway. Alright, um, so the common driveway as we've designed it extends off Highland Circle, swings around like this. I'm not showing the property lines on these, um, on this plan, but obviously the houses aren't each property. And he's gonna have to come back with a plot plan. For each house that includes a septic system that's designed properly, a building footprint, you know. Driveways that are graded correctly, so on and so forth. That's not really what this is about. This is for, this is simply for. The a common driveway that extends out of Highland Circle that can be accessed by one, two, three residential lots. So just keep that in mind. That's what that's what this is for. Um, so as we've designed this, uh, per the Massachusetts Stormwater Quality Manual. Essentially, everything that's draining. We we're gonna curve the eastern side. Of this entire thing. So everything that's raining down this way. She flows down into the road and then the low spot is right over here. So she flows down when it hits the curb, it comes this way. She goes down, hits the curb, comes this way, gets into a catch basin right here. And then is dumped into this above-ground stormwater management area. Alright, so all the storm water comes down there, gets into here. And then eventually, um, during the larger storms, it's gonna overflow and make its way down to this very large wet system. Where it's currently going right now. Um, so. We provided plans and profiles and a very robust erosion sedimentation plan. We provided a stormwater management report that shows. How we're capturing and treating water, how we're detaining it and releasing it. At a rate that is less than it is under current conditions today. Uh, one of the things that we had originally when Mr. Graham had brought this before you, whatever it was, six, seven months ago. This was a gravel drive. Um, and there was a number of comments. It was previous engineer that prepared previous plans. Um, and I've done a few subdivisions with him. He reached out to me to take over the project. Um, so I actually, in this plan set, I'm showing this as the tomb in this pavement. Based upon your third-party review engineers comments, we're gonna, we're gonna make all this grab. Right? And I think that's what, that's what he, the third-party review engineer is saying that. We'll meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulation. So we are gonna make all of that gravel as it originally was planned back in July of last year. So I received yesterday. The comments from your third-party engineer. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the comments that they made. In July have been addressed to their satisfaction. Um, there are still some outstanding comments and some new comments, which in my opinion are a little bit excessive. Uh, keep in mind, this is, it's a, it's a driveway we're talking about here. It's not, it's not an industrial plan. It's not a mixed use, not commercial, it's a, it's a driveway. Is what we're talking about here. Alright, so I'd like to just go through the comments that I believe are outstanding. And, um, and then I'd like to, I'd like to get, you know, your feedback and I'd like to get the planner's feedback. And perhaps the third-party engineer, of course, get their feedback as well. Uh, and I've highlighted the ones that it appears that they're looking for further planner visions and further response. So if everybody has their, their review comments dated February sixth. Uh, the first one is at the bottom of page one. And it says, uh, section five point seven found a hand in the zoning bylaws pertaining to environmental impact study. That may be required at the discretion of the board. E I S would require a comprehensive hydro hydrology study to be developed in the area of the proposed project. While a stormwater management report was provided, did not include hydrologic. Calculations to demonstrate compliance with requirements of section five point seven. The board should determine if the E I S and the subsequent hydrologic study is required for. For the proposed project. Now, I was a little bit confused by that because we did provide a stormwater management report. It had a full hydrologic design that showed that we're treating the water and we're detaining the water. And I've looked over at, I looked over at section five point seven in your. Bylaws, um, and everything it's saying here, I'm not gonna go through everything, but drainage area. Area cover types, soil types, perk rates, drainage patterns, levels of streams, rivers, ponds. Rates runoff, intensity of storm event, time parameters. Um, essentially, the, as I read this, this storm water, your bylaws require us to reduce the peak for the twenty-five-year storm. We've actually done that for the hundred-year storm. So. I'm a little bit confused as to why they're saying we're not meeting this. Uh, and it does say that, it says that the board has the option to require an impact study. I feel like we met it, but even so, again, we're talking about a driveway, we're talking about here. Alright, the next one on page two is number three. Uh, the original comment was. Section seven seventy-two five A requires the rate of surface runoff from a site shall not be increased after construction. An analysis of pre and post-construction runoff rates were not provided for review. That was not provided with the original application, but we did update it and it was provided in our stormwater report. Their follow-up comment, the first one is, while peak rates. Of sur- surface runoff are reduced for the site as a whole. It should be noted that peak rates are increased for all storm events from the two off-site north watershed. Recommend additional peak rate mitigation in this area to comply with the section, so on and so forth. So what they're talking about. In our model, and I don't wanna get too detailed, there's about an acre of property right here. That essentially drain ends up just draining down to this watershed, this wetlands down here. The reason that it's increasing ever so slightly is because we have a little bit right here that was formerly woods. And now we're turning into grass. Nothing from the, the driveways getting down here, but just a little bit right there. That is now becoming grass. And I looked at our report. And essentially, what we're talking about for the twenty-five-year storm. The increase that we're showing in this little bit right here, which eventually makes us all the way down here. Which we're decreasing all of this pretty significantly. There, that is increasing by point zero three C F S. In the twenty-five-year storm. Now, forty acres of watershed right here that Mr. Graham owns. A total of four hundred acres all going down here. I just did a quick, a quick calculation and. For the twenty-five-year storm, I came up with. Four hundred cubic feet per second under existing conditions. So we're talking about a point zero three C F S. And they're suggesting we provide some mitigation over here. I don't, we could do that, I suppose, with dry well, but. But we've analyzed everything coming down to this watershed and we're decreasing it up to the hundred-year storm. So it seems excessive to say for that little bit of grass right there, we want further mitigation out here. So. That's just something, to me, it seems a little bit excessive. Okay, the next thing that they say in section three, uh, number three is. Additionally, we disagree with the decision to model drainage areas E one dash one and E one dash two separately for existing conditions. As is, these drainage areas are broken into two separate drainage areas in an arbitrary fashion. And the drainage area does not represent any flow impediment. Or high point breaking up the drainage area impacts the time of concentration flow pass in a manner that does not represent actual flow patterns. And my response to that is. Hydrologic design is not an exact science. And if you have five engineers. Perform a existing and proposed hydrologic model and design on this, you're gonna have five. Different ways they do it. It's all gonna be the same methodology, but it's not all gonna be exactly the same. There is room for engineering judgment. And again, to me, this is, it's engineering judgment. Every, we're, we're looking at this whole thing down here as a whole. And we're reducing up to the hundred-year storm, everything that's coming down here. So, again, I can go back and I can redo things, I can rework things, make all of these. I can keep spending Mr. Graham's money. You know, I can charge him another five or ten thousand dollars. Change my model and the plans when in reality, it's not gonna change anything about the design or anything about the water that's actually coming down here. Alright, the next one, their next comment is down on page four. Page four, E one. Uh, they say the project plan section included detail for the proposed stormwater quality basin. I have no problem with that. I can provide a detail for the, you know, how we're gonna build this. Essentially, it's gonna be. A couple layers of stone and then some soil with some sandy soil mixed in it. Got a lot of water quickly. I have no problem with that. We can provide that. The next one talks about, um, materials included in construction of stormwater quality basis should be indicating plans. In addition, materials and seed mix, I think that's kind of the same thing. And again, I have no problem with that. I'll certainly provide Mr. Graham a specification. And I can put that on the plan that he's. Okay, the next one on page five at the top. Um. Their original comment was a maintenance schedule for the period of construction. I put that in our stormwater report and their comment from this, uh, last, uh, response says. While a long-term operation and maintenance plan was included as a part of the stormwater report, a construction period maintenance schedule. Was not. We recommend including a construction period maintenance schedule to ensure stormwater management feature functionality during that time. Again, I can certainly pull together something like that. I can put something on the plan. You know, Mr. Graham has a good reputation. It's gonna be him and maybe a couple of the guys constructing this. We have robust silk fence out here. Um, I can do that. Again, it's a bit excessive to me. Down in number nine in part B. Um. Without going into great detail, originally, they said the standard two, I'm sorry, um. Let me just, I don't wanna read the whole thing.
That's okay.
Anyways, it's, it's engineering judgment, in my opinion.
Well.
Go ahead. Yeah, um, number three. Has to do with. The fact that originally, when, uh, the third-party review engineer reviewed it, it was gravel. And and then with our most recent application, we've made impervious. And because of that, it triggers the standard not being met. We're gonna go back to gravel, so that should take that right off the table. Um, number, page six, top number six standard board. I think that's the same thing. Yeah, okay, it's the same thing. It was met before. With gravel, then we went to impervious, and it was not met. We're going back to gravel. That should take that off the table. Um, down on part G. Um, he's asking for a construction period pollution prevention erosion treatment patient plan. Uh, we've put together, again, very robust. Um, erosion control plan. Um, it's gonna be Mr. Graham and a couple of his workers and the town's gonna have the right to go out to look anytime they want. I can, I can put all these things in a plan. I can charge him to do this. I don't have a problem doing that, but. Me, it's unnecessary. Going on page seven, um, H. Three, uh, has to do, we showed some grass pavers. We're taking those out. That addresses that comment. Uh, the next one, part four, the plan that is drawn to scale and shows the location of all stormwater B M Ps. Uh, what does he say? The plan is not included as part of the long-term operation maintenance plan. Okay. So again, we can, we can pull together a long-term operation maintenance plan and give it to Mr. Graham. Um, down in for part six. An operation and maintenance budget, they say an estimated operation maintenance budget is not included in the stormwater report. Uh, additionally, standard nine states the operation maintenance log form should be included. Again, it's gonna be Mr. Graham and a couple of his workers, um. I don't know why they would need a construction budget or operation main's budget. Um, number ten is about illicit discharge compliance statement. Their comment and illicit discharge statement is not attached as a part of the stormwater park. We recommend acting clarified. If the science, the sign state by. Or by the sign state, it's a driveway. There's not gonna be any illicit discharge or hazardous materials, anything like that. And then there's new comments on page eight, so let me go through these. Number ten talks about all slopes exceeding fifty percent. Should we cover four stops topsoil implanted? I mean, well, I'll put a detail that shows four inches of topsoil. That's no problem. Uh, number eleven. That's talking about there should be no removal from the premises and. I think it's, uh, may wanna make sure there's not a lot of material hogged out, uh, through the streets and. You know, I can certainly put something on the plan that, that clarifies that, that Phil's not gonna be removed. Number twelve, refuse and other ways to spoil them, disposal measure, methods, excuse me. Um, yeah, this is excessive. It's, it's, it's a guy with a backhoe and a couple of workers building a driveway. Number thirteen indicates that he says, indicates the elevation plans are to scale of a quarter inch equals one foot. Apparently, that's in your bylaws. Um, we provided a plan profile that's, that's at. Um, scale one inch equals sixty. Essentially, the quarters to a foot is essentially one inch equals fifty. I can revise it. It's just more time and money. It's not gonna change anything about the way he builds it. Number fourteen, the location of the post-curving along the access driveway is not clear. I will make it clear, we're gonna basically curb the eastern side, so nothing flows over. The driveway, it all gets to the catch basins, it all gets to stormwater management areas. You can certainly do that. And the next one, he says, catch basin to catch basin connections may compromise the ability to catch basin to function properly hydraulically. We recommend these connections are not used and that each catch basin is directed to a drainage manhole. I mean, we just added fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to his construction costs for two or three manholes. It's actually, these things are gonna work just fine. Just fine the way they're designed. All this coming down here is from the woods. They're gonna work just fine. Um, so that was, that was the, um, that was the review letter. I'll be more than happy to take any questions or, I mean. The question the commission may have, clarifications.
Did you? I think time bonds on. So, I'm gonna defer first. Sure, tie and bond, if you will. Sure, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, this is, uh, Chris Rookins from Time Bond. Um. I, I understand where he's coming from for some of the, um, comments. I mean, basically, we just. We go through the zoning and we go through the stormwater regs and we're just making sure all the, the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and, uh. And that's how we, you know, develop our peer review letters and come up with the comments. We're just making sure everything is. Per the standards, um, and I understand that, yeah, removing the gravel or removing the, the. By two minutes. Pavement and turning it back to gravel, that's gonna, you know, remedy a lot of the comments, um, and some of the other ones he said he was gonna address. Uh, I guess it's. Um, possibly up to the board if, if they wanna push back and. And, you know, if he's, if, if these other comments don't need to be addressed, or I guess, um. I mean, some of them are just, you know, standard stuff, operation, you know, construction period pollution prevention. Uh, standards and, and that kind of stuff is just standard stuff that typically is in a stormwater report. So it's not a big, it's a, it's not a heavy lift, so. Um, and then the additional comments that we have at the end. Those are, you know, legitimate comments, uh, like I said, you know, out of the zoning bylaws and, uh, we, we were confused about the curbing. Where the curbing was gonna be shown and there was no details on the plan. So there was information missing, so I think, you know. Generally, these comments should be addressed, but, um. Probably be up to the board to, to decide how to move forward.
Thank you.
Well, Will, could you just expand on that? You, you mentioned a couple of times a long-term operation and maintenance plan. What, what would that do, that plan, what are you gonna tell?
So. Technically, what you do is you put together a plan that shows. How you're going to, uh, maintain the stormwater features. So in this case, it would be. Okay, we have, uh, sumps in our catch basins. Every few years, they'll vacuum the sumps out. Uh, once or twice a year, he'll go down there and he'll cut back the, he'll cut back the grass or the, you know, the flower mix that's down there. He'll inspect it for garbage and. I mean, at the end of the day, he's not gonna own any of this. This is all gonna be owned by these three people. Actually, to be honest with you, it's gonna be owned by this guy. So whatever we do, it's gonna be done by the people that own. Those parts of the subdivision. Because this is not gonna be common ownership. It's just three separate lots.
So the street that I'm encircled. Is a private road in perpetuity.
It's, it's not, it's driveway.
It's a drive, 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 it's a common driver.
Well, we thought, I think in some instances, we found. Conversations where having something that gets to the maintenance of things like storm drains and. Uh, you know, over time, we've seen those like deteriorate. Uh, when things have come back into development and we've had issues when we've, you know, developers have tried to go back into it. A, a development that might have stalled and then you go back in and find that.
You, you know what I could do is I. We've got to have a few plot plans for each of these. I can put, I can put those, that schedule on the plot plans. So each person knows, here's what you have to do. In other words, like this guy probably will not have any catch basins. This guy will have to just do this and a couple of catch basins. This guy might, I don't know exactly where the catch bases are, but this guy. You know, so we can put those on the file. That's not a big deal.
Yes, it, that, um, Patrick's pretty much right on the point of what he's asking. Uh, because of the fact that. We know eventually these stormwater detention retention bases, whatever you wanna call. Um, will eventually become under purview or review by the E P A. Because of stormwater compliance. That's what's driven the changes to the stormwater by law. So, um. So, we definitely would look for a plan because we know that there has not been maintenance. Um, many. Probably gonna stretch this to say any of the stormwater retention bases in the tank. So you need to put up. A name or, or, okay, that would.
And I'll put that on, I'll put the, all, all that on the updated plan and then for each plot. Put what they have to do.
If you would, I'm gonna weigh in. And I believe because of. And I'm gonna ask, because I was not on the board when the initial started. Did the three. Building locations or the plots that are shown here, have they been approved? Because they'd all have.
Okay, we come back to plot plans. We gotta show that it's within the setbacks.
Okay, so that's, yeah, just actually, yes, the comment.
Oh, we are taking into consideration the imperviousness of the houses in the computations.
Yeah, I mean, the house, that's fine. I think I looked at the plan and what there was list. When I looked at the other man. The other day was declaring envelopes. You didn't have anything over forty thousand. Square feet and make it clear again.
We try to minimize as much as possible.
Yeah. And, and just, you know, we were, we were out there this fall.
Yeah.
With a bunch of test pits for two, for two things. One, for the stormwater management, but I'm like. You know, Graham, we're gonna be out there anyway. Let's also start poking around for septic. So we've identified locations up here, which are suitable for septic. Identified locations up here. Down here.
Yeah. Everything's above the road.
Uh, yeah, we originally were thinking of putting one down the road. It was not good, so we, we came up top, so everything is gonna be above the road.
Um, so my, my thing on the, my, my response to, um. As you went through on the first, first section, five point seven, what you were looking to, they're looking for, you know. E I S, if an E I S is required, and I'm gonna say, you know, what is to me. Because of what the project is.
He said no?
I said no. Yeah. That's what I said. Um, but I do have to ask. Where drainage areas E one dash one and E one dash two are. That is down in section on page two. Um, paragraph three. You can show me that.
I mean, essentially, E dash one is a little bit right here. It comes, that's it. It's on the button, eight, right there.
Yeah.
Everything else is E one dash two, and there's a little bit up here that. Goes that way and we're not changing anything about that characteristic. So essentially, what we, what we do is. We try to, try to break things up into catchment and washout areas. But at the end of the day, what, what we try to do is everything going down here is what's important. And so we're barely increasing this, but we're. Decreasing this, in fact. Look at my numbers here. So essentially. What's coming down here? Under. Okay, we're actually, we're maintaining, we're maintaining almost exactly what's happening right here for the ten-year. And the twenty-five-year, but for the hundred-year, we're decreasing by maybe four or five percent.
So. Um, the next question I have, do you know if there's a manhole or a train at the cul-de-sac? Where the entry to the common.
There's one somewhere. There's something, there's something up there.
You know, I don't know. I mean, it, it slopes high and low.
Yeah, yeah, just under that driveway somewhere up there. Yeah, one, yeah, a little bit on the driveway.
If there's a catch basin there, it's gonna have to dump out somewhere down here. I guess.
I think it's going back that direction. It's gotta be, be going towards the east. Yeah, like just before the street.
Come back.
That direction. Yeah, it's not going up to the city, it's going across the street. Like, like we were reading, fortunately, it seemed like that way it's going there.
So that adds.
Because you go there, you've never seen the work flowing away.
So we will. Update the plan with the. Seed areas.
Yeah.
Um. We'll put the stormwater quality basis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page four, E. We'll put the stormwater quality basis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page four E. And I'm a small I.
Yeah, I indicated we we would, we would certainly do that.
Thing with there, what I I'm gonna say tie and bond is concerned with is the schedule for the construction period maintenance, you know, how you're gonna maintain everything. If I'm correct on that. Still fences, like you said, that nature. Yeah, BMVs coming in and out there, you have to. So getting to the next one, which is nine E. What they're asking, I believe, is that does the test pits um have different different material structure? Meaning soil structure is different, it's from an HSGA to an HSGB. So I believe they're asking to run the rates at a HSGB.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, if I could jump in here real quick, yeah, that's exactly right. The the soil testing showed the um the, that it's a sandy loam, which is a HS hydraulic soil group B. Um but what was used in the model was a hydraulic soil group A. Um so it should really be modeled based on what the soil testing was done on site to to, you know, match existing conditions.
And that I do agree with time on that. That's really just running uh the calculations. I'm not asking it to go off and I think you can do that. You change probably and TSS. This this area is not this section of town does not fall under that type of um monitoring. Hey, we do monitor on the, if you will, the western part of town from Wilberham Road. To the west, that's all monitored. So I'm not going to
I think this goes away, going back to gravel.
Okay. Well, they're asking for it, yeah. TSS is the total suspended solids, which you have to have some type of device to remove back down to ninety-three percent removed, right?
Yeah, that's only for impervious, like the two minutes.
Okay.
Not, because originally, look at the receipt, their original comment with the original application, this standard is met. And they say no new impervious is proposed, and I had said no response required. I didn't realize that if I put it back to, I shouldn't realize it, but I didn't realize it when I did that, then I triggered, I triggered the standard.
Okay, so we're gonna remove that. The SWIFT, that's kind of standard. That's uh number nine uh G, I'm sorry, down the bottom. But they say the standards have not been met for the revised submission. Standard A and Massachusetts stem water management standards. I believe that's what they call a SWIFT, is what they're asking for. Right, that was it, that was called.
I don't know, that would make a difference on what the material is.
I guess I'm gonna go back, I am bond.
For uh for G.
Yeah.
Um yeah, we're basically asking just for a basically a construction period pollution prevention plan that includes this information, you know, all these bullet items um which was not in the submission, and this is just a pretty standard um document that's typically included. So I don't, I, it's not a, it's not a real heavy lift to to include this information in the, in the, in the report. I I would recommend it be done.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I agree. So we moved that, I think we're on page. I I I you remove the grass papers, if I'm correct, and you said that. For long-term maintenance plan, as we talked about. I am not really concerned with uh BI. Your maintenance uh what it's budgeted. Basically, just let us know you're gonna vegetate the fifteen percent. We're looking for that and the, what it is, is um if you're going to remove gravel from material earth, um then you have to go to CBA, but there is, you're gonna repurpose all the material and cut and fill.
So the other Times that original mill said.
Um I'm not sure, does it fall into regions whole side?
I had on my notes originally, I I thought it's
Okay. That's
I thought
Okay.
Fifteen percent, I thought was
Yeah.
Or either, or um
Yeah, they're gonna comply.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's gotta be done.
I think ten point five one of the submission for the uh special permit. I think they're looking for putting a project in ways such as a developmental that putting in a free tool or a business, I think that's what they're looking for. So I'm I'm gonna say I'm not too worried about if they have the refuse and waste disposal methods. Those are gonna be handled for when you go to do the house. Location curbens, oh yeah, number thirteen, I think. I think, and it's not clear, but the quarter, quarter inch to one foot um on the elevations. It's just something that's been
You know, what's funny is that's architecture scale.
Yes.
We don't even deal in architecture, so he's probably have to get a, go get a new scale.
No, he's gonna try to figure that out, so um and again, if I'm correct, what it is, is that elevations or or any architectural lines that will be seen there. That's again for a business or something for that effect.
Oh, you know what? I I misread this. It's not talking about the planet profiles, talking about exterior facades, okay, and that will be addressed at plot plan.
Correct.
Not that it's even gonna come before the mission, it's gonna go for ability.
Correct, yeah, that's why I'm
I didn't, I misinterpreted that.
That's okay, I'm not concerned about it. The curbing you said we're gonna do um next one is the catch basin, the catch basin connections. As long as in the maintenance plan, you have something that probably states how you're gonna, you're gonna clean them. Um whether it's yearly or something to that nature. Because you're gonna have to, seeing that it's gravel. If we have heavy storm, it's probably gonna wash into the base, the possibility of it, so um I would, I would definitely have you, if you're gonna do this and wanna know how how it's gonna be, who's gonna take care of it.
Well, and that maintenance plan's gonna include inspections, that the maintenance plan will include inspections, so.
Yes, yeah, and the maintenance plan should, because every year we go through our catch basin, it's okay, and we, again, we suck up the That good?
Yeah.
Just a question, well, I looked at, you know, Temple Brook, under there on your, sort of the the before and after to Temple Brook. I mean, what, in terms of water flow, what what does that look like? Could you make a statement about?
So we have forty acres, give or take, up here, that are discharging. I'll use a twenty-five year storm as a, as a reference point. Under existing conditions, it's about sixty, let's call it sixty sixty-five CFS. Right? Under, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. Under existing condition, twenty-five years, about thirty, about thirty-four CFS. Under proposed conditions, it's exactly the same. Now, the overall watershed is four hundred acres. This is about a tenth of the overall watershed, and when you run some quick calculations, it's about a tenth of the flow, so essentially, and again, I just, I drew it on the computer screen off of your GIS, so I came up with four hundred acres. It could be six hundred, it could be three hundred fifty. But we're talking about about four hundred CFS coming through here in a twenty-five year storm. And we're contributing thirty-four, but again, what we're contributing is exactly the same right now and and after he goes this.
Any comments running the audit? Yes. So the environmental
Can you please just state your name?
I'm down here. Where everything go, if it's not done.
What's your address, Ralph?
Two two nine South Monson Row. In this swamp. So I have no problem with this development. Um it's the third, possibly the fourth development, it's tried, developer, it's tried to develop this since the beginning. The other ones didn't get through, either from the planning board or the conservation commission. But we're looking at this, this is just a driveway, so it's different than before, but you said there's no need for an environmental impact study. Does that trigger the conservation commission? Well, the con, does the conservation commission still get involved this process? The only other thing I'll say then is just that this gentleman was allowed to add an opinion that he thought a lot of things were excessive. All right, um you keep saying, this is a big swamp area. So I don't think the things that tie and bond game are excessive, all right? We wanna do this and do it right, so it doesn't end up on our property. Thank I I walked this it's steep, I don't dare with any is, I mean, coming off of island and walking right down through, I've gone it think three times, so I, I have to know you're with the problem.
It is, if you just look at the map out there, it is, and that was the problem before, it was in, it sounded like ritual in here, sorry, whatever that thing's called, it's on the map.
So it it is it's, it's a site not to be taken lightly. I know when Mr. Sami no one to put, puts quite a few more houses through. Um so you're preserving at least some of the uh features that are, how would you exist? So again, um I've walked it a couple of times. Uh it's steep, I'm concerned about the driveway, but if it's done right, I hope the
And just so you know, there's, a- as you know, if you walked it, there is like a a path that's already there, and we're, we're, and it's already somewhat cleared, and it's obviously grown in since it was clear, it was clear, but we're essentially following that, that path, and this, this slope of the driveway itself is, is not steep at all. It's, it's slight, it's just after you get the curb and you go out, and then we're going down a three to one slope, which is not a, a three to one slope, you can mow the lawn mower. That's not, I wouldn't consider that to be an excessive slope.
I I'm, I'm in a different opinion, and I'm not gonna battle with you, okay, you know, um like I said, coming down there, and I'm probably ten years older now than I did it before, and I ain't gonna walk it, okay?
We had some fun hauling water back there.
I'm sure, trying to get back there to do um some perks or whatever.
That's why I said it's not much material that come out either. It is based on how the, the road is already there. There's not much material that needs to be moved though, like that, so.
Yeah. That's why you cut and fill.
That's why I'm impacting us a little amount of trees, I'm taking on too much of anything.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so I guess we need to look at, see the revised plans and the revised
Do you wanna hold off on a motion then until we get the revised plans and stuff?
Yeah, I would respectfully add that change where we're making are not that difficult. These can be done as a condition, so your planner can confirm they're all been done. Respectfully request that.
Our zoning and planning work majors. However, you're wanting to, now chair.
She's got to sit by face too.
It's only every six months.
Would you like
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Does any other board members have any comments as to how they would like to proceed?
I'm comfortable conditioning it, same.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable conditioning it.
You're all set. So I would make a motion to approve the project, which is just the driveway.
The site plan stated that, or you're just saying, are you referencing the site plan? And then it conditioned revising those?
Site plan is just the driveway.
Okay, yeah, cuz this is what I'm, okay. I'm looking at this, which includes the houses and everything else, right, the envelopes. So, okay, so not the subdivision plan, site plan for the common driveway. On
Revisions?
Yes, the revisions, the the supplemental of the revisions that were discussed. Yes, the revisions, the the supplemental of the revisions that were discussed by.
Yes.
At this meeting.
Second. All favor.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Is that one last thing, we need to drive maintenance agreement?
Um the driveway maintenance agreement would go into.
Before the houses, the lots are permitted or.
Correct, that would go with the the house, yes.
And another condition is it's original hillside, has to be done or no?
Well, ridge and hillside, you're gonna have to, yeah, ridge and hillside. And um. Um you've you haven't gone to Concom, yeah. No, oh, that's. So we're we're not gonna concern.
Uh huh.
That our approval will stand on its own, if there's a change from Concom. Then the plan would have to be revised.
Right.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Nicole.
Bye, take care, bye.
Don't forget to recognize me next month.
We start.
All right, motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Remove.
I've seconded that.
Oh. All right. Now we'll open our regular planning board meeting, um February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, uh seven twenty-five PM. Our first order of business is nine perennial lane home occupation. Come on down.
Oh, yeah.
Good, hurry up. All right, so.
Yeah, I am a request in the home office.
Okay.
In business, but I'm still in.
Great. What kind of business?
Uh it's a nursing agency. Need the horses to recruit nurses for hospitals.
Oh. Okay, um. So it's just gonna be you working out of your office?
Yeah, it does mean, you know, within his role, virtual, I'm not expecting anybody to be on stage.
Okay.
Oh, employees, that was, do you have employees, no employees or?
The the employees will wait at our hospital.
Oh, okay.
Okay, are you keeping your landscaping home occupation?
It didn't work out, so you're having, I I just called it. IRS and change it into this new company.
Oh, yeah. So we're getting.
Yeah, just, yeah.
You're gonna have a sign or anything? Sign?
Fine.
Yes.
No.
Business?
No, no.
Just going through this.
No, yeah, like. And uh but there wouldn't be any signs, any sign online, you know, and that this is just a new business, you know, I don't plan to be there forever.
Yeah.
You know, as I started, start growing, I'll move on and rank in in you, obviously some ways.
Okay. Oh.
No employees?
No, no employees will be on site, it's just, yeah, it's a missing patient, everything will be done, virtual.
Yeah.
Employees will be around or wake up, working the hospitals.
Basically, no noise, vibration, smoke, dust holders. Yeah. There would be no public display of goods or wares.
No.
No. Um. No exterior storage of materials.
No, probably the store, you're just.
Uh. And uh. No more traffic than would be generated, right?
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else? Motion to approve the home occupation. Or rough. Nine perennial lane.
Second, all favor.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Coming in, stopping St. Joanne, I guess. You're out.
Um yeah, now you can go to E V A T town clerk for your business, so you can get needed.
All right, one fifty-nine North Munson Road.
There's Russ Martin, old Russ Moore.
No, can't hit last minute, uh yesterday.
Oh, I'm not sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Garmain.
I'll help you.
Hi. Hi, um I'm here with my father, we're just seeking advice, uh because we want a sub a uh tiny cabin business. Um in our lane, we know that it is um right now uh under a business. Uh it's business, it is business owning, um but looking through the bylaws of once, two seven seven, is it that lodging house? Um can occupy five or more um uh options at once, which consider lodging. Um the our plan is to have at least um five of these set up um with targeting couples, so at least two people, the cabin. Set up around about fifty to thirty feet apart from each other. And I just wanna see where we can go from there and see if you guys can help me out to go through with this.
Wow.
So this is no one.
Yeah.
Yeah, um I did provide, if you guys um want to know more, I did fly some for us. Yes, yeah, so it'll be like. Um. This this will be like a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
And we may uh. Uh a it'll be separated like this, you can guys.
Hold on. Are they all the same?
Yeah, they're all the same, yeah, I figured that.
Yeah.
You guys don't wanna be passing it around too much.
No.
But yeah, so it'll be equipped, um each cabin will be about uh. Leave uh one to two hundred. Uh. Yeah.
Yeah. It looks like, yeah.
Yeah, and then um they will be equipped with a a clean size back mattress with um the fridge and induction stove.
Yeah, outside. Are they on wheels or mobile?
Yeah, they will be on wheels, um mainly uh for moving and transport. But uh once they're on site, they'll be uh possibly staying on site.
Thirty-two John, if we're trying to find it on the.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, thank you, I read my mind. Keep reading it, you know.
I'm just chucking it along the table.
It's gonna be electricity hooked up to them, uh yes. Don't up there and without me looking at, I mean, I.
Business.
It is business.
I put a map in your book. It's own business.
So.
The triangle spot of.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're, yeah. Yeah, this is the. So the question that I have, and I've had this previously. Was that the whole. The whole lot is not. Business, and this is my problem with all of those along North Munson Road. So. Um.
People portion in the back end, things like.
You know. Yeah. This area here, so that's not, but um.
Based on um what I saw for business lot of zones, um they do say that a lodging house. Can be approved as long as it's approved by the ports, that's why I'm.
Right, yeah. I'd have to, it it's a special permit.
Yeah.
Any comments? Me? I'm gonna say. It's allowed, special permit. We'd have to see how you're gonna configure it.
Yeah, I think I wanted to see with what the port says before we move on to any.
Yeah, and I'm not looking, you can't put a hundred of them in there.
No, no, we don't need to do that many, we wanna keep it um kinda exclusive and very um quiet. It's mostly to target people that wants to get away from big cities to um ex- enjoy the, you know, outside of um where the the nature.
Yeah, I mean, water is gonna be one of the issues that I foresee. Um electricity and septic, okay, or, you know, waste. So those are some of the questions that I have. But. That I would wanna see on the plan, what you wanna, you know, how you're gonna access um. I mean, they look, I'll be honest with you, it looks like just a um. You know, the uh storage containers that you see.
Yeah, we do get that a lot, yeah.
And and I've I've seen people put homes in there, okay, so. Um the creative thinking, whatever, um. Yeah. I mean, my feeling is you're coming back to us, and for for me, I'd look at it. With an open mind and seeing how you wanna do it, how you wanna configure it, of course, yeah, cuz you're gonna have to, there is some wetland in there, you know. So you'd end up having to go to Concom. And the patient. Um there's also natural heritage up in that area, the box turf, I believe. Is a endangered species, so you have to get. Who to do some of this, some natural heritage. Oh, I I can't speak to natural heritage, I just know about it, right?
Would this be seasonal or year-round?
Uh year-round, yeah. Definitely with water, stuff there. Even if there's, are they self-contained, like they have like holding tanks for your, for the waste?
Uh and. We haven't uh done that far, yeah, we haven't done that far yet, we we're thinking about septic tanks. Um but I've seen somewhere they do have in- internal storage, but it's. They are.
That that you gotta be able to get up there with another vehicle, with a vehicle that remove it.
Mm-hmm. And.
Yeah. Looks like um some of it's gas-fired propane.
Um I know, but there are like, you know. The portable stones are inside that are end up end up two phones.
Okay, those are induction, so.
Yeah. So there's no uh there's no uh gas or something.
Yeah.
To be like electric heat or something.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Outside fires, that's another story.
Well, that would be, yeah, that's another issue that would have to.
We don't plan to have any, like, building up like a uh a set uh pit or anything.
Yeah.
Cuz I believe that will go into camp uh camping.
Yes.
Which we don't want, which we won't be approved for that.
Right.
So probably just equipped with a picnic table, yeah, and call it a day.
You won't need a phone anymore.
Yeah, no.
So so what is the use under lodging, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I think it goes under retail, two-point-seven-seven, right?
What's that?
What is it? Two-point-seven-seven. Hotel and tourist or or lodging house. That the one that you saw?
Yeah, yeah.
This is on fourteen.
I was looking at page thirty-two.
Johnson methods.
Four-point-one-six hotels and motels, I can think. I don't know.
I think that's, I think, I think those drive.
What were you, what did you say, Madison?
I think those. Line. Same thing.
Would he something?
Hotels, motels.
What is that number?
Four-point-one-six.
Four-point-one-six is hotels and motels? So I'm not sure, and what was your other one, Madison? Two-point-seven-seven?
Well, no, I was looking at the definition, um but yeah. Page fourteen. Way back, page fourteen.
For a definition, right?
Did you say three-point-seven-seven?
Yeah.
Two.
Two point, the definition is two point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's for definition.
Yeah, yeah, table of use, there's.
I went to the table.
Four-point-one-six and four-point-one-seven.
Right.
Lodging house.
Lodging house or hotels and motels, so. The both of them are allowed in the business district with a special permit.
How do you plan on like advertising, is this like?
Um so we aim to target social media, Instagram, TikTok, or anything that um will, or Facebook, and then um uh. Reservation will be done done online, um specifically maybe a main website.
Oh, okay.
And then they come to the residents, get their keys and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would have the office.
Yes.
In the residence floor.
Yeah, we do have a grandfather building there.
Yeah.
That will keep for the zoning um with the sign, um so we plan to maybe use that as the office and the order of the main operations for like any cleaning and um.
Yeah.
Are you guys local? Do you guys live in Hamlet?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Just wanna make sure they're around.
They moved from New York, right?
Yes, yeah.
Of the country.
Yeah. Okay.
What?
Yeah.
So you understand?
Yeah, I just um uh as well also ask like if, well, the next step that you guys wanna see if I do come back and uh to bring back to you.
So my thing is I want an engineered plan, in other words, a survey plan.
Similar to the.
Yes, okay, similar to that, with the sites positioned, showing where. Um and some type of um, and this is all new, so. May have to go through a couple reiterations, if you will, but um. A plan of um. How you're gonna get rid of the waste, water, power, et cetera, you know, the infrastructure that you're gonna have to have to serve. Each one of your sons, if you will, okay? Um size of the building, a hundred and a half, um how you're gonna stay away from some setbacks, you know, with your plan. I don't want you to approach too close to a neighbor property in the valley. Access roads to the young chat, that's the access, yep, yeah, that would be on the site thing, I'd call it, yeah. Okay, I'll I'll have that in um. Yeah, and then you see Joanne. A plan. Um.
A plan.
She became a planner tonight, actually.
She was scheduled, you're uh.
So is he going right for the special permit, or are we doing a preliminary?
Let's do a preliminary.
I think we should, cuz we don't know if it's. Unallowed use and all that, we have to see. We don't, do we?
Let's do it, let's see.
Preliminary?
Preliminary plan. Yeah. Before you go hog wild, yeah, all right.
Now, when he submits that, you want all those, the waste water, the power, the infrastructure, all that on that preliminary plan?
On a plan.
As if it's gone for the government.
Try and show as much as possible.
Yeah, as much as possible, because like I said, we've never done this.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to have. Look at what you wanna do, we're gonna have our input, then. You may revise the plan, you may say, no, I don't wanna go any further, you know, whatever, so you may, there may be some. Issues that we need to work out between the two of us. Planning board and yourselves. And, um. Once we come to an agreement, then you would submit for a special permit, that would give you the approval.
Okay.
For, for now. Okay, the special permit would involve all your neighbors around you. Okay, so.
Yeah.
You know, they may have some issues also, that's why I said, keep it set back into that. Yeah?
Have you guys talked to conservation yet?
Uh, not yet.
That'd probably be a good. Next step to, just to start that conversation.
Yeah, you can start. There. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Can we keep the pictures?
Of course. All yours.
Excellent. Not sure if I like the coffee, that's okay.
You always bring your own.
I'm leaving it.
Maybe just water. Alright, it's okay, I see you. Appreciate you taking time.
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you. Alright.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Can I come down here? I feel like you can't hear me.
I know, it's okay, let's, let's see if I. Okay, what? Um. What do we wanna do next?
Abolish solar.
Go home.
The, what's that? Different thing for solar, it has to be in a parking lot, like, and a parking, so they don't.
You should see Paul, he's actually like leading. Alright, so battery energy storage systems.
Yes.
I did a little research and I spoke with some people.
Yeah.
Um, nobody had. Good answers for me, cuz it's still so new.
There we, okay, so that's, yeah, kinda what I found else.
So the big. The. Stuff I kept seeing was compliance with UL nine five four zero, which has to do with battery performance checks, functionality checks, inverted performance checks. Thermal monitoring and safety inspections. I couldn't. Get any more specific for that, on like what the actual test is, and I don't know if we're going to.
I don't think we need to, I think this is a real good outline for what we want.
Okay. And then, and then just referring to NFPA eight fifty-five, which is a stationary energy storage system. Which has to do with the site layout, the fire protection, everyone I've talked to, the biggest thing was fire protection. Um, and some. People I spoke with. That, that most of the equipment in these is probably smart enough that it's self-testing pretty regularly, so that there's.
It is.
Uh, in addition to this, so that. I don't know, is what it is. Um. So I think we can try to add that. Somewhere, do we have, do you have the bylaw?
Uh, yeah.
Do I have it?
They go in your tab, do you have them? You should have the new revised bylaw and the two attachments in tab number four.
No, I think so.
Yeah, well.
Is it in there?
No.
As the two attachments there?
I have the attachment.
Yeah, they're, they're right here, cuz I printed them at the last minute. One, two, three, four. Five.
We can try to set on how, yeah, just, you're like, go ahead.
There you go.
So. Why don't we just? We'll just read through it and then we'll figure out where we wanna add this in, does that work?
This. You wanna read through?
I think we just read, read through the draft, and if you see anything, speak up, and then if you see where we should add in the compliance stuff. We'll notice.
Yeah, she just wants us to read through the whole thing.
The new revised draft?
Yes, see if we see any layering errors.
Anything in red is, I had a question. When you get to, whenever something's red.
On first page?
No, keep going, no. No, that, that should have been changed, that's.
Okay.
Final, I moved it over. That's fine, yeah. Oh, yeah. She said, did everyone get the biomap yet? We need, on the biomap, you guys had asked me to ask conservation if it's a map they use. Are you on what pages, if John's looking, you didn't get to biomap yet?
I don't read it that way, go ahead.
Oh, well, in biomap was something you asked, the board asked if conservation uses that, and if so, to keep it in, they do have a biomap and they do use it.
Okay. We'll keep that.
Yes.
I didn't see, was it in red?
Yes, except for on page four. The planner made a mistake, it's E ten.
The planner.
Where there's no page, there's no page.
Yeah, maybe with that page numbers.
I will, when it's finalized, I'll put the page.
Shoddy planner.
What?
Shoddy planner.
Well, you know, the hundred and twenty thousand that I make, you know.
Vegetation buffer?
I didn't know if you wanted to say vegetative buffer or vegetation buffer, is in our bylaws for like in the golf recreational, I think it's called a vegetative buffer. That's anyone. Yeah, but it did, vegetative, I think, but we said vegetation, so, I'll change that, yeah.
We say, uh, right at the top, in, uh. Purpose paragraph. You say, the new energy storage system is a diverse public safety. Reports?
What page?
Two. Page two. The purpose of the bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we say, we say protection of the town and private drinking water supply, can we use the word aquifer, protection of the aquifer? And drinking water supply?
Yeah. Yes. Where, where are you, like the, until fourth.
Yeah.
Sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Address public safety.
Such a planner. I don't know how to spell this word.
Natural heritage also, I think you wanna ask, right?
Yeah. You have all that to us?
Yeah.
Is that what you're getting ready for? I got it.
You do?
Yeah.
Natural heritage, all that.
No, I was, I didn't get that, sorry. So.
Protection of the town. Public and private. Drinking water supplies, yeah, go for protection district. I'm on that.
We're still on purpose, right?
Say that.
Are you still on purpose?
Yeah. Protection of the. Endangered species.
What was the? Protection of the aquifer, is that you said?
Yes. The aquifer's.
Protection of the town aquifer.
Publicly district, however.
And. Yeah, public and private.
So, super long sentence. Sorry, it was on an hour. Your information?
Yeah.
Where, where are you? Operation and maintenance manual?
Yeah.
Conclude. Actually, it's, I think you actually. This. Operation and maintenance documentation shall include the following. Always thing, include the following testing scope. Okay, list all that, and then we would say into UL nine fifty.
Yep.
Nine five four zero NFPA, and that's.
Those, that makes sense. So you're not putting in the top, I can't see what that is.
It's kind of repetitive.
Okay. So you want testing first? You don't have to rewrite, just what, how, what order?
Yeah. One. And then you'll say in compliance with. Three, right? And then operations and, I think that's what you're gonna say, so.
Yeah.
I think that that too includes, yeah.
Colon? Have you taken that all up?
I think that could be part of this. That's what the battery always tests is kind of.
Alright.
We're just put that. I think that could just be part of this.
Alright, that's going under, um, what is that?
The dialect they're figuring. So, has anybody gotten to the operations and maintenance part yet? So I think, um, what we'll do is we'll say operations and maintenance manual to include. I will include the dielectric testing, but then we'll also include this testing scope. That I sent around, and then it will say in compliance with the UL. Ninety-five forty, as well as the NFPA eight fifty-five and UL nineteen seventy-three. That seem okay to you?
You wanna place it there?
Yeah.
Yeah. The O and O and M.
Yep.
Okay.
But you wanna keep that line there, period, and then go right to there, that's interesting, we still want this paragraph in there.
I'm coming here, okay. Well, like this is, like this. Was right here. Make sense?
Yeah. Well, well, when I go do it.
Well, it does, operations and maintenance manual to include the following testing scope. That's what the tests that we're gonna require.
Okay.
In compliance with.
That, uh, and then, then I still, okay.
And, um. You're gonna have it yearly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yearly and the results shot forward to.
Town and.
Towns designated engineers.
Yep. Doing right, yeah. They'll all. Test reports will be somewhere.
I just went.
It doesn't say, uh, goes to the engineer, though, I don't think. It says it, it could have sworn, just, oh, wait.
Yeah, yeah, in the red. The red. I liked your testing.
So, so, okay. So this. The period, and then this goes at the end. So we're gonna say.
Yeah.
All testing, testing reports to review by an engineer, then yearly to measure them.
All degradation.
Uh, I think I need to measure the system. System performance.
Performance.
Yeah. Or both, UI system and that.
Liability insurance stuff we use and say annual evidence.
Yes. I think we should.
Yeah.
If slowly wrote for you?
Huh?
I wrote slow. You gave me my handwriting.
You gave me my handwriting.
We're done. We're still reading through it. Just about.
What? What am I gonna do?
I just refer to the CMR, whatever. Not just part of like this.
No, yeah, it did. Fell.
Yeah.
Judge. That wasn't judge. I was like. Board member.
I could not remember, and I was like, judge, and then all of a sudden I was like. Oh, my God, I don't know how he's.
Don't know, Dave, good question. Yeah.
We're asking the last.
Yeah, what's the eighty-eights in the top paragraph in the last page?
That was there, I know, I don't know. So I didn't, uh, did I highlight it?
Yes. From where?
Yeah, let me pull their, the where original. Thank you. So how does it, what is the last sentence?
Abandon.
Is it into that? Eight. It is in there. In their original, so I don't know. I just highlight it because I didn't know, it's probably a typo. In the where original document.
The town may at its discretion and utilize the eighty-eight for the removal of a system, and they're sort of saying in accordance with.
Utilize the something for removal of the systems.
I can call and ask him. Realize.
Is that any other, like, is that something they just pulled from the national, that would be in one of the other ones? One of the other on bylaws?
Yeah.
Oh.
If they just like pulled it from the.
I, I have them all there.
Or you change that eighty-eight to decommissioning fund.
We're looking in the other bylaws to see if it's something they pulled from. Yeah, I think that he's right, though, I think that's. Yeah.
Utilizing decommissioning fund, which is, uh, under decommission number two. We have. Reference in separability. Take that.
No, I don't mean that. Just put them on the basis in a month. You're forty minutes. It's still moving. On half day.
Because I have a question on that one, too.
Yeah, so I think A becomes the decommissioning fund.
Okay.
Alright, so. Are you still reading?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
You think it's great, good to go?
Uh, no, but I would add, I don't know. From Gina, I read this over, and I think it's excellent.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, very concise, very. Do you wanna drop?
Actually, in all honesty, I see so much more this, that could be added to this bylaw.
Yeah.
And I just don't even, I don't even know where to start.
Well, you gotta start somewhere.
Yep.
So that's why, um, where you have. I know I studied Joanne.
Yeah.
Know I studied.
Yeah, where I put at G must have pillows.
Yeah.
After stuff.
I would just. Put everything that she has here in that. Okay.
Everything? I think it's kind of.
Very concise, yeah, I know, it's. You know, it lays out.
I'm sorry, all I was gonna say was one of the things I didn't add, because I wasn't sure, was about construction noise. Because I know a lot of times they'll bring these batteries on site before the site's actually energized, so there'll be diesel generators running. For six to eight months, and I don't think anybody should have to listen to that for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. But I wasn't sure if that should belong, that should be in part with the noise, or if that should be more generalized. Like having, you know what I'm saying?
So, you just do, got any work hours?
Yeah, I did have a work hour thing, I just didn't put it in because I wasn't sure.
I think that would be a condition.
Okay.
Okay, of the special permit, in other words, you've got one year. That we would allow, you know, uh, onsite generators, et cetera, blah, blah, blah. Equipment to build the site. After that. You know, this would become an effect.
Yes.
Your noise standards. So that's, that would be a condition.
Okay.
Because it's not permanent, and the generators aren't gonna be permanent, right?
You would hope.
So you understand.
I do.
Construction related noises, you know, you've heard it in Wilberham, because they had to hammer. No, no, I'm, I'm saying, Wilberham, the, the neighbors had a problem, because on, uh. Maynard Road, I think it was, or Three Rivers or Maynard Road, um, when they put that big site in there, they were up there with that. Hammer. Breaking up rocks.
Yep.
And that was a complaint, so, you know, construction noise is gonna be allowed for a period of. X.
Right.
After that. This noise goes into effect.
Okay. I was just, I was more concerned about them bringing the batteries on site and just running the generator all day, all night. To keep that HVAC system running until they hooked it up.
And that's okay.
As long as we don't have to hear it, I guess.
Because how long is it gonna be?
I don't know, I've heard, I've read, it happened in Conway, it was six to eight months of the generators running.
Okay.
And I think PVPC said the same thing in their best solar practices guide.
Yeah, so, one of the things is, we know it's gonna terminate that. This one.
Right.
So the people around them know that we're gonna hear noise for this period of time. After that, we should not hear it.
Okay.
You have to give the.
You have to give them something. I tried, I tried to be as. Tried to follow what Mr. Davenport said, try to make it as strict as possible.
Yep.
No, no, I, I think it's very good, it's not. It's not beyond the scope of what they could do, okay, especially the monitoring, that's the monitoring phase of it. So, I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion that. You know, the summary report shall be made available on a monthly basis, or upon request to the Board of Health and the Planning Board, but the Planning Board. After we're done with this, it goes away.
Okay.
So.
You can take that, that'd be fine.
No, it's gonna go to Board of Health and the zoning enforcement officer, the building department, that's where those, any records. Should go to him.
And then have board health, because it's a health thing.
And the Board of Health, because it's.
What page are you on, John?
Paragraph D, I'm sorry, the second to the last, or the, the, the third from the bottom.
Yeah.
Line.
The only other thing I didn't add, because I couldn't really find too much research on it, was anything with like electromagnetic interference. Yeah, and I didn't know how to put that in.
So those are, that, that can be. That's a very debatable.
Right, I know.
We're gonna stay awake.
That's how I felt about it, too, because I couldn't get anything concrete.
Right.
It seemed to be more maybe a wind issue than.
But could.
Could be.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, who knows?
I know.
You know, if you lift the lower power line.
Yeah.
Man, you get crazy like me, but I don't.
We're gonna, we're gonna blame the power lines.
Yeah, so, you, you got that, Joanne?
Yeah.
I know.
I, I wouldn't change anything, and it wasn't, I, I think it's. I think it's really.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, I worked hard on it.
No, I, I did very well, and I, I think Madison, you. This hits what I've been looking for also, okay.
I did, I did do some research on the setbacks.
Yeah.
Restricted setbacks, I saw the battery was in Spencer.
Okay.
It was, let's see. For property lines and public ways of at least three hundred feet. Step back from side and rear property lines and public ways of at least two hundred feet.
Yes.
And then if it abuts an open field, farmer pasture, it has to have a setback on all sides of four hundred feet.
That was Spencer?
Yeah.
Is that, if it's co-located within a, uh, solar?
I want to say.
But I think that might have been on its own.
I wanna, I'm trying to remember, I read through so many bylaws, trying to remember.
That's all right, Spencer, if you would shoot that to Joanne.
Okay.
And I'll review it myself.
I guess, I guess my other question misses to the board, I realize I'm not on the board, but I have, I've. A lot of time into this, if I see anything else at this point, that I'd like to add, like, for example, I think the, um. It says in there that the utility, you have to, the site operator has to show utility, um. Evidence of the utility, kind of utility connection, it's a.
Yeah.
Um, a notification. Yeah, documentation that shows the owner of the energy store system has notified the electric utility of the installation. I feel like it should just say evidence of interconnection service agreement.
Yeah, and that's, we have that in our solar by.
Right, but it wouldn't, I don't know, it wouldn't.
It would have to be for a non-co-located.
Right. To make it, to make it match.
Yeah. Putting it right.
There was, there wasn't a lot of stuff I saw, I just wasn't sure how to get it to all of you, so you wouldn't have to read it.
Well, so what's your.
We've, we've got to kind of round, wind it up.
Yeah.
Yes.
What, and, and I'm gonna be very truthful with you, Gina, what happens is. Because this is always a moving target.
Yes.
Okay. The, the bylaws, I mean, our bylaw for solar has been changed three or four times, okay, um. So I, in the future, I, I foresee it probably changing again.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one thing that. It's constant.
Right.
The change. You know.
I think he has a question.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not the chairperson.
Oh, I know, I just.
Yeah.
Anyone was still reading. So the, the volumes of the tiers. Were they just copied from the where thing, or did somebody?
The, take the tier levels?
Yeah, the tier.
Those were actually came right out of, um.
The definitions.
Definition from one of them, I think it was.
State.
The state.
Yeah.
State of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
That's how they.
Tier one residential.
Yeah, tier one and tier one's residential, tier two is like small commercial.
Small commercial.
Yeah, yes. So, tier one, it says, uh, who's, I, I'm gonna quickly read one. Whose purpose is to store energy from residential, solar?
Yeah.
Energy systems, and then tier two is whose purpose is to store energy from commercial. Solar energy systems.
Right.
Then tier three goes into the higher.
And those are from the state. And those are from the state.
They are from the state.
Just doing some of the research I had done on the, on the, on the UL standards.
Yeah.
I came across and uh, and in um. International fire code that disagrees with those volumes, and it's, there's quite a difference in the residential tier.
Okay.
So I think if it's international fire code, I think. Since we're a municipality, we have to go. By the state regulations.
So by state.
State definitions. Because ultimately, that's your AHJ is what. Supersedes.
And the only other thing I wanted to say about that UL standard, I've been pulling my hair off for a couple of weeks, I mean. That whole standard basically covers the manufacture and installation of the product. After that, it doesn't do anything. So if you do send someone out to do inspection or something like that, you can't tell them to inspect to. That UL standard, because it doesn't exist. There is no standard that exists.
Right, UL is just a, it's a label.
Yeah, so that could be a problem when you do inspections as far as. Right, you may have to have a minimum ground fault or something like that.
So the ones that we added in that you probably didn't see.
You guys have that copy.
There are specific, there are specific tests.
This.
So this is what we're adding in.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Drying in the paper.
They're actually called like the battery performance testing, it calls for.
Right.
So, but there's no, still even with that, though, there's not like a. Specific test that we can say. Like do a needed test or whatever.
Exactly, and and again, it's not necessarily the test, what's the standard of the test that you're looking for? You know, uh, if you do a ground fault check, you're allowed so many.
Milliamps, cool, whatever.
What's that?
Milliamps.
Yeah, so many millions of ground, but I mean, I don't know who would publish that.
Exactly, nobody wants to publish anything.
But they're very.
Like. Madison said. Trying to get information on battery testing.
Oh, there's none.
There is, so that's why I said. And again, Gina, I'm gonna explain to you that as we go along, we may have to change some of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Future, but right now. This gets us to a point where. Battery performance checks, we monitor, okay? And then the functionality checks, the inverter performance, thermal monitoring, which, and safety inspections, so. Those are done. Every year, and then what I was gonna say is, once we get this in our bylaw, the the way it's formatted, Joanne. What I would say is, let's reread it again. I think we're gonna have to add, and those reports again are going to be forwarded. To. Um.
We have that in there.
You, you, yes.
We added it. To the building, to the town engineer.
And the testing is.
And the other thing I was gonna say would be uh. The costs be borne by the. Operator.
Yeah.
The evaluation costs.
So I guess one other question I have is that I saw some specifics about lighting. Um, oh, the emergency response. Management.
Yeah.
I did see a couple of bylaws that got passed that required. A representative or an official who's like co-owner or cooperator of the battery, they have to be here within two hours of an emergency. So should I gather that information and just send it to Joanne?
That's.
Something like that.
Where was that in? Was it already in there?
It's still what? Oh, yeah, it's still gonna be burning, but exactly. Well, I'm just thinking that it would be hard for someone who has a company in California with no repair to be able to build one. They have to have somebody on site. They have to be responsible. It has to be somebody who is the face of it as it burns.
You know, that that gets into. Fire.
Yeah, with the under.
I I I'm reading it right now, emergency operation plan.
Yeah. I'll be honest, a lot of the.
Service and repair personnel and providing agreed on. So it's in there. What I'm saying is that it it's there in a manner of speaking. That's up to. The fire chief.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not gonna step on his toes. He can. He can work that out with the operator. He hasn't provided any info to us.
I sent him an email and a follow up.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. So.
So that's to cut you off, but so is the plan, because I know the the table hasn't been adjusted yet since the first draft, so are we? What's the board's thoughts on? Allowing the the certain tiers. Tier one.
Tier one, you're gonna put in R one, R six, R four, R six.
And then tier two.
It's gonna be in the business or commercial.
And then tier three and four would be the same.
Here three and four.
Like.
So okay, so tier one.
Uh, tier one is gonna be permitted in R four and R six, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So P and P, okay, tier two is commercial.
Yeah.
Business.
It's business, is commercial and business the same?
Yes.
They're two different districts.
Yeah.
So you're allowing it's permitted in business and permitted in commercial.
Yeah.
And that's it, everything else is no's.
Yeah.
Tier three is limited industrial only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Committed and pure, tier four is limited industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no's for all the rest, okay?
Well, is it a permit, it's not, it'd be special permit application, right?
Yeah.
Or tier three and four?
Tier three and spa.
Yeah.
SPA what? Which, what do you want for the?
Special.
PB.
Saturday. BAPB.
Most strict.
Yeah.
Well, I guess. I'm, I am a little confused about tier two. Because it does say in here, we're allowing it where we allow solar.
That's. Okay, it's co-located.
If it's cold, oh, yeah, okay, yep, okay.
So co-located. If it's located with the solar, yes.
Yes.
If it's not by itself. It has to be in a. Commercial at this business district. Is that what you're?
Tier one.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, I was trying in my mind to visualize the table.
Two, three, no, no permit. I mean, to picture to, no, no permit. And everything else is no.
Yep. Alright, we'll get this. Is updated. What's our time going to get it to um?
Town council.
What's that?
We have to get it reviewed, right?
By town council?
You want to clean it up and then?
Well, I'm just trying to back into town meeting to figure out how much time we have.
So.
Great. I just saw that, that's what I need to think of it.
So March.
And we've got a public hearing.
Yep.
I've written down the whole.
But so once you have a public hearing, that's the draft you go with for the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay.
After it's approved by town council. Right?
Well, yeah, are you gonna have town council review before? That can take a while.
Well, that's what I know, that's why I'm.
Just got the ADU back.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask if we have reviewed this tonight.
I do put a little fix on my nose. Oh, so.
So what town meeting is on?
We've got a new bylaw. Publishing a town council, public hearing, public hearing, then town meetings, that's a sound clear. Right?
Right.
So town meeting is day twelve. We'd have a public hearing.
Well, they keep going, you can have it up to.
Well, no.
I usually.
We're setting a precedent with that, we're not.
I don't have my form in front of me. You've got to have it so many, so many um, weeks before. Advisory and.
Oh, yeah, so John, when would, when would advisory have to know about the?
About either one of these?
Yeah.
There's really no costs involved, so.
Do we have a date yet? What's, what's like, what's the, what is like, what are you called, the green sheet date or whatever that?
Well, May fir-, yeah, March first, I'll warrant articles are supposed to have ready.
Yeah, March, well.
So they'll put a holder in it.
Just they'll put a place.
Placeholder, so March first, so we've got to have this public hearing.
We'd have that public hearing.
No later than the end of March.
So from what I, yeah, there.
So we should probably do.
So. Last, the tenth is the last.
Yeah, March twenty sixth. What?
So the tenth of March. Is our last, right now is our last scheduled.
Advisory.
Advisory. So. So you're probably looking at. The end of March.
That's what we just said, March twenty sixth, do a public hearing.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, that's a regular planning board day.
Yeah.
So it would have to go to the paper. Um.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
If you got to back into it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, have to be published on March sixth, it's gotta go to the paper on the third, March third. So by the twenty sixth, we've got to have this done.
So we need to get it to town council like tomorrow.
So check with um. Tomorrow, if you've got a minute, Joanne.
I'm not here tomorrow. I'm, I'll do it on, when I come back next week, I'm off tomorrow.
Okay. Um.
Well, I know you can have public hearings right up to the town meeting.
Yeah.
So I, so we want to go.
So then why don't you do it in April? So, or April, May.
Add two more on that.
Okay.
Imagine more.
Okay, yeah.
So I, I might have a conflict, but I.
Well, I mean, we don't have to do it on the second, we can do it on the third, I mean, the third Wednesday, because. There's actually an extra Wednesday in April.
Yeah, okay.
It starts so early.
It's an extra key, what? You did the sixteen.
Sixteenth as our.
That's no vacation for your kids, is it?
That is, uh, no, it's not.
Not, okay.
April locations the next week.
Okay. So.
Alright, so we'll do the public hearing on April sixteenth.
For um.
Okay.
Well, we can do them both in one night.
I know, I'm kind of just saying, we just do them both.
Do both, okay. No problem.
Yeah. So I mean, you'd go to the paper end of March. No, nothing else will be scheduled.
April sixteen.
Yeah. April sixteen.
So published in, on the May thirty. Twenty seven and the third, we have to go back on, go March twenty fourth to the paper. So that would give us a couple more.
Ah, here, that can, no, because I'm gonna do it.
I I will, when I, I have a form that I fill out. There's so many dates.
Right.
So April sixteen, public hearing for ADU and ESS. The ESS. Well, in the meantime, you can take, you all have these.
This one, which one?
From town council, you can all review them in preparation for.
Yes, and no.
You know, the next meeting.
Do your favor.
Sorry, we're having a little confused, so. The next planning word meeting, but with February twenty sixth.
Yeah.
So will we just, will we discuss the battery again or is this?
No, no, I've got it one more time, then we. We'll just send the draft to town council to review.
So. Mr. Matthews asked me to send you the stuff about Spencer.
Yep.
Okay, and then whatever else I.
Yeah.
If you have it earlier, I can send it out to my board and they can possibly look at it prior to.
I, I'll try to get it to is.
Yeah.
What I have, what else I have. Okay, no problem.
Alright.